This is called a special meeting to order. It's the ninth day of July, 2007. To conduct the business that has been specified through the advertising of this special meeting. First order of business will be the invocation and the call on Mr. Hall for that and then remain standing for the pledge of allegiance.
Then we bow our heads. Almighty God, we ask that you bless the work of this Board of Commissioners so direct its purposes and guide its deliberation that its thoughts, words, and action in this meeting may be according to your holy will. For it's in your name we offer this prayer. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic over which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
I will note that all of the Commissioners are present. Therefore, an item can be added to the agenda that has been published. And I would like to add an item under new business concerning the handling of the applications for the tax administrator. Do you hear a motion that we do that?
Do move.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed say no. It is so ordered. That'd be item number two under new business. Do you hear a motion that the agenda be approved as it is printed with that addition?
So moved.
Although in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed say no. It's so ordered. First item of business is the consideration of a request from Central Carolina Community College for additional funding for emergency services training facility. Do we have any questions of Ms. Minter concerning the...
I have one. I'm in favor of this. It looks like this dates back quite a ways. But my question is, have we been paying on the certificate of participation all this time?
Yes, ma'am. We have been. Those were the certificates of participation that were issued in 2004 and we start making payments as soon as they are issued, usually six months.
So the amount of payments we've made minus the interest or whatever, how does that balance out?
Well, you're borrowing more money than just this piece. This was included with the money that we borrowed to build Southernly High School. So I would have to go back and figure the distribution.
There were several things bundled in with that.
Right. It was Southernly High School and Emergency Services Training Facility. We borrowed both in 2004 as one issue. But the funds have been kept segregated as far as interest earnings. And that's what I looked at to see if they were left funds to at part.
Was that interest earned reported in our budget as revenue or...
No, it goes strictly to the capital project at this time. And usually, typically what happens with your investment earnings, if you don't have a project overrun, as we had in this case and as we did at Southernly, typically what you do if the investments earnings are not needed is we roll them back into the general fund at another date to pay debt service in a situation like this, or we roll it back into our capital reserve fund for future capital projects.
Okay.
So the remaining and the rest that will earn every side of this project will go back to debt service.
Even though we're paying out some money, we're getting some back.
Right. We're earning probably at this point, definitely at this point in time, we're earning more than what we ever paid. Because we're earning closer to 5% on our money. This was borrowed at around 4.2 with effective interest rate.
Any other questions?
Move to approve.
Been moved to approve this request, although in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed say no. It's unanimous.
Thank you very much.
And I'm glad to see that we're moving on that project. It's been around a while. All right. Item number two, the added item concerns the application process or the review process that we want to do concerning the applicants that we have for the position of tax administrator. We do have several applications. Our HR director has gone through those and she has separated out those that are the best qualified as opposed to those who may lack some of the qualifications that we advertised that we were looking for. Do we want to appoint a committee to review these applications as we did with our new county manager? Or do you as a whole board want to review all of the applicants, all of the applications? Either way, it's fine. It just depends on the different board members' times, you know, to me, who can do it. I've got no problem with either way.
Even though this is reports to the board, could John perhaps do all of this and make his recommendation to us?
Well, John works for the board also.
Right.
That's the same thing that got us in trouble in the last...
That's right. So I think it would be better if you authorize me to appoint three of the Commissioners to review these and I will not be one of them.
I would suggest we do that. It would work fine with John and I think that...
Well, John can be a part of it.
Yeah.
But he's saddled with that responsibility.
A lot of these people might, and with the Commissioners, we had people with existing jobs and they didn't want anybody to know that they were applying for this job. And I think it's a little bit more contained if you only have a committee. And then just the ones that, you know, you don't want, just kick out and move forward.
All right. I would like to suggest to the board that you give me the authority to appoint Ms. Shook, Mr. Kelly, and Mr. LeMond to review these applications and bring back recommendations to the board. Do your motion.
I so moved.
With all three of you except...
What is the time frame?
Well, I want to appoint Mr. Kelly as chairman of it and he can work it out with the two of you.
As long as it's not this week, because I'm heading back to Iowa.
Well, I don't think it will be this week. What you need to do is get a copy of the applications to each of the three members.
Are they online like the other ones do?
Joe has copies. No, some of them are not online. Do you hear a motion that these three be approved?
So moved.
Further discussion?
Yeah, I want to also say that the others of us who want to look at those applications and make comments would be able to do so at the appropriate time. And as far as I'm concerned, once your recommendations are made, there'll be no need for going back and forth on this issue. That's what the committee is for. Makes his recommendation, you don't agree, you don't agree. But you'll have ample time in front end to make your comments.
You got it. Well, thank you. Although in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed say no. I'm going to turn it over to you, Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Proceed. The second section of our agenda for today, and this has been duly advertised in the newspaper as required by law. We need to hold two public hearings. The first one is a public hearing to consider a project with the Lee County Economic Development Corporation and Frontier Spinning. Mr. Hughes had already scheduled vacation for this week and he called me last week and wanted to know if it would be okay for Mr. Daniel to, the chairman of EDC, to come and present the project and answer any questions that you might have. So I will open the public hearing at this time for the Frontier Spinning LLC and recognize Mr. Daniel.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, I am not Bob Hughes. I'm not nearly as tall nor as good-looking, but I did go to NC State beforehand. We are here today, I do appreciate the time to speak to you this afternoon, but we are here today to hold a public hearing and listen to comments from the general public as the county considers economic incentives to Frontier Spinning located at Highway 421 here in San Fran. Frontier Spinning has been in business since 96, 97, operates out of two buildings totaling 600,000 square feet, employs 350 people locally. They had $20 million worth of sales and 150 employees and one plant in that 1996, 1997, I guess, first year. In 2006, they had $700 million in sales. It's almost three-quarters of a billion dollars in oil plants now. And now they have 10 plants and other operations in Rockingham County and in Alabama. And they employ 1,500 people in all of those plants, those states. Frontier is also considering, Rockingham County and...
How many in Lee County now?
350. I believe that's down in my notes here. And they're also considering Rockingham and Alabama for this expansion. Frontier is considering an expansion of their business worth an investment of $20 million. Four million of that is in real estate, 16 of it is in new machinery. And the EDC, which I represent as chairman, is recommending an incentive of $325,710 to ensure that the investment is made here in Lee County other than anywhere else in the world. The agreement before you spells out how the calculations were made and how and when the payments were to be made to the company. I'd like to remind you, this is a performance agreement and if the company does not place the investment in Lee County, it will not receive the incentive. The payments are scheduled over a five-year period and paid after taxes are paid. Frontier is a major player in the spinning industry with its headquarters here in San Fran. And I'm standing ready to answer questions if I can.
Anybody have any questions of Mr. Daniel?
Mr. Daniel?
Yes, sir.
I have a, I got online and checked out the website. We have 87 manufacturers in Lee County to which of the total, over 12,000 employees. My concern is that when we do one for one, are we going to do it for another and another?
Hold that until the discussion board. Okay. If you want any, to ask him any questions about the application itself and the contract.
At our earlier meeting, John, you had mentioned that this represented 75% of their tax liability. Was that, am I understanding that right? Don't remember...
Seventy. Seventy.
Seventy percent?
Yes, 70%. Yes, ma'am.
And this is the first time that we've ever gone that high with any company?
That is correct.
I guess my first concern is that we're setting a precedent here, you know, at 70%.
Hold that comment.
Okay.
I will speak again with the Economic Development and its Committee 100 as being for it as well. So I'll be here for questions as well.
I guess another question I have is, you know, this is based on the tax rate staying the same. And I think the figures I saw was, you know, what our projected tax rate's going to be. If for some reason, you know, we get the Medicaid out of here, we can actually reduce the tax rate for our property owners, how does that affect the schedule of payments? Because I think these were based on our current tax rate. Is that correct?
Correct. Ms. Shook, I don't know that I can answer that. I would probably defer to counsel on that because the contract that we did, we have to do something, obviously. And that's what we negotiated as a board. And so that's what we've arrived and are able to put for you today. As far as the technicalities of what may or may not happen, which I don't know that we know the answer to that, I probably would defer to Mr. Hall to, he may be able to help me on this, but I don't know.
The contract that's drawn requires them to pay back the goal on which the 70% was based on. So if the rates go down or if the state changes the schedule for their equipment and it goes down, they're obligated to pay us the difference between actually what was paid and the total that was used to determine the incentive.
So I guess my concern is, you know, the, I can't put my finger out right here, but for example, if it was set at the 72 cent tax rate, and let's say two years from now, our tax rate is 70%, are we going to be locked into that payment where the contract says 72 cents?
You'll notice the incentive was paid out in equal installments.
Right.
If you went over 70%, they'd get more the first year. But what they've done is they've figured the total incentive and paid it out in equal installments.
But based on one tax rate, right?
Yes, ma'am. The one he has there, that's the only one he knew to use.
On the one that he...
But as I say, if you reduce the tax rate or if the state were to change the depreciation schedule for their equipment, they will still owe us the total amount that we figured the incentive based on.
So it's possible then that we actually, this could exceed 70%. If our tax rate goes down, their tax bill would be less actually, and then we're still...
They would have to pay us the difference between what the incentive total, I mean, what the tax rate would have been using the schedule that's set up in here. If they don't pay that much in five years, they owe us the difference between what they did pay regardless of what brought about the reduction.
Isn't that still clear on that? But I'll have to figure out.
It sounded as if he's simply telling you that there's a flat rate here, like the 322,800 dollars. Whether it goes up or down, all they owe is the 322,800.
That's the amount that we're giving back to them in the form of a grant, but that's based on a 72 cent tax rate, right?
That's 75.
75.
That's what the contract rate is today. I think I understand what you're asking. If it goes down, do, is there a difference being paid? And I think what Mr. Hall is saying is this is the contractual agreement and they owe over that five-year period or each year, what you see in front of you. That doesn't change. It stays that is. If, for example, once they reach 322,800 over five-year period, regardless of what tax rate, that's their obligation.
Okay. So they're obligated for that amount that's in there also.
Correct.
The figure's there in the contract. All right. Thank you, Mr. Daniel. I recognize anyone from the public who would like to speak in favor of this proposal.
I would like to if I may, but I don't have to further let you go. No, go ahead.
Thank you. I'm David Spivey, Chairman of Board of Directors for the Central Area Chamber of Commerce. And I know we haven't even got to the second one yet, but I just want to let you know that the Chamber of Commerce supports both of these incentives that are on the agenda today. And I have a copy of it. I'll pass this out and give everyone a copy when I finish. Over the past 25 years, the Chamber has consistently recommended a balanced growth policy. Balanced growth means reaching a higher standard of living for all citizens by maintaining a balance of people, jobs, public services, and natural resources. To promote balanced growth, it is sometimes necessary to provide incentives to help businesses grow and build our tax base. We urge the Board of Commissioners to vote yes on both of these packages before you. The criteria to receive incentives was carefully developed years ago by Economic Development Corporation and adopted by all three elected boards of Broadway, Sanford, and Lee County. The insistence on quality jobs and a minimum 5B in investment provides a legitimate measurement and makes good business sense. The Chamber also believes the incentives offered should include safeguards for our existing business community and the taxpayers of Lee County, such as the contractual arrangement described in this package does. In summary, the Chamber of Commerce on behalf of our 500 business members supports the incentive package offered to Frontier Spinning and Caterpillar, which John will get to later, to encourage their investment in Lee County. We want to see jobs stay here in Lee County and we definitely don't want to see our business or manufacturers leave the county and go to other areas. And we feel like we need to do, in this competitive world market, that we need to do everything we can to keep our economy strong here. So we respectfully ask the Board of Commissioners to approve this request and help build our tax base and provide good jobs for our citizens.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Spivey, and you can pass out your...
Thank you, David.
Anyone else who would like to speak in favor?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Again, my name is John Daniel. I serve as chairman of the Economic Development Corporation, president of the Committee of 100 as well. I would like to address a few more things that did not come out in the formal presentation of the presentation for the opening of the public hearing and then, of course, try to answer any questions that we may have. I, like a lot of you, do not like economic incentives. And you may find that strange to hear me saying that, being chairman of EDC. But if we do not do or pay attention to some of these things that are before us, we are truly going to be playing on an uneven playing field. It's not my fault, our fault, the county's fault, the state's fault that other entities allow these incentives to be used across the nation to entice companies. We need these jobs. We need this industry. You know, I'm pleased and proud to be able to bring one to you. I know of other counties that have counterparts of mine that used to have somebody that was interested in that county. So I'm pleased and thank goodness that we have such a good company and have many good companies that will come before us to ask for these incentives. Now I'd like to, if I can, try to, because I'm asked this a lot of times, on the street, by telephone calls, and perhaps by some of you, there's a lot, big misconception. When you read the paper and you hear folks talking on the street and you hear these great big numbers, you hear 300, and I've just told you the 300 and some thousand dollars, or you hear a million dollars thrown here or a million dollars there. We've heard these across our state here recently. And it's overwhelming. It's overwhelming to me. But when you come back and look at exactly what we're doing, I think we can clarify a few things. One is there's a long list of prerequisites that they bring before the economic board, which is, as you know, Bob Hughes is our economic developer, but we do have a board as well that reviews these. Several of them are your pointies, several of them are the city's pointies, and so forth. But the taxpayers are never at risk. The company only gets back a portion of the taxes paid. I'd like to reemphasize that. That's only the portion of the taxes it pays. If it pays no taxes, it gets nothing in return. And at the end of that incentive period, then they start paying 100%. I can't think of a better way than to fulfill our needs because we're going to continue to grow, have infrastructure needs, and we need an industrial base to do that. I don't want to have to come back and have residential people trying to pay an industrial base when we have good companies. And we have other good companies I know that will come here and we have other good companies that are in our community now. And we hope to retain them just as well as we retain anybody else and keep them producing as well. The other thing that I like to point out, and it's very difficult to put down in apples to apples, but it's that payroll that hits our community, where they buy everything from hamburgers to gasoline to lawn mowers. And it's that multiplier effect. That money stays in our community, keeps getting spent in our community. That's invaluable. I can't put a number on that. I can't package that up and say this is what we're getting. But when we get that extra payroll, and these are not replacing jobs, these are not getting rid of a part of jobs for this particular company and putting another group in, this is adding some more jobs. So having said that, I'd be glad to try, I think, Ms. Shook, and I think Kirk, you have some questions that I, hopefully I can answer.
Yep.
Not, we'll get you an answer.
We're not ready for that yet.
Okay.
Ms. Shook.
That's fine.
Ms. Shook, if you look on page 24, 23. It's Exhibit D. Noticement, they have computed the taxes on the real property and over five years, that's And they've done the, using the state's schedule for textile equipment. And that comes out to 322,800. And they add those two together, you get $465,300. If they haven't paid us $465,300 in five years, they owe us the difference between what they have paid in that figure.
Thank you, Mr. Daniel. Yes? Anyone else who would like to speak in favor? If there are none, do we have anyone who would like to speak from the general public against this proposal? Having heard no response, I will close this public hearing and now entertain a motion from the committee of Commissioners to approve or disapprove this project. I'm moved to approve it, Mr. Chairman. I went to the city council meeting the other night and this was going on and I want to reiterate one thing. I appreciate what Mr. Daniel said about working with this company, not just with this company. He would do this for any company. Made no difference where they were located or whatever. But I do recommend this incentive package for Frontier Spinning. All right. Do you have the comments?
I have a... Right, yeah. But I think they've got a couple of questions.
I have a question, Mr. Daniel.
Yes, sir.
I understand we have 87 manufacturers in Lee County to which over 12,000 people are employed. How many other small businesses do we have that total, I mean, on top of these 87 manufacturers?
How many other small businesses? I couldn't put that to you now. We can certainly find that out.
Because my concern comes on the basis of if we do it for one and we do it for another, what is the, where do we cut? We draw the line where we don't do this anymore?
Where we, in my opinion, where we cut, where we stop or start is in the negotiations of the type of company. It goes in how I describe it as basic and non-basic jobs or non-basic and basic product. The product is produced in a basic, leaves the confines of Lee County and is sold in other places. It's fresh, it's good money that's coming back to us. It's fresh, it's good money that's coming back to us, whereas non-basic does not, doesn't put anything, there's nothing wrong with non-basic. But basic is the type of, for example, a GM in Detroit or those type of big companies. And so our job as Economic Development Corporation, the board, is to determine whether those incentives will create the things that I have tried and we have tried, that I tried to describe and that we tried to describe in the presentation that this company would give back and a multiplier effect. Certainly, we're not going to call on everybody's, each company that's in, that's a manufacturer and ask them, do they want an incentive? They need to come to us. We have our rules and we've set up those rules and done the best we can with advice from Commerce, from Raleigh, and come up with our set. And I mentioned our set of rules, I should say. And let me just, one other thought is that I welcome, I think most of you, a lot of you on this board, you're new, so you haven't had a chance to attend, you're welcome to attend our meetings. We're open for suggestions. This is not stamped in stone. This is not saying, no, this is what we're going to do. We don't care what everybody else is doing. All we're trying to do is play on a level playing field to keep companies of this magnitude and others that might like come to our county coming and producing these jobs. So if there's a better way to do it, I'm willing to listen.
I think you hit on something good, John. The fact that whether it be a small business or a man, a large manufacturer, they have to make application to the EDC. If they do not, then the EDC does not consider. And I'm not...
Incentive policy in page 36, that sets out the qualifications if they consider.
And apparently not his board's decision on the incentives. So the question he raised is actually a question for this board and any four members of this board decide when to stop. That's the true answer to your question, not to the recommending board or by...
Yesterday I had breakfast with a business owner. Andy runs a rehabilitative facility and he had to pay for a water line to be moved to his facility so that he can meet the state requirements for his licensure. And I feel that it's our role, government, local government, to provide those resources in order to provide the infrastructure to make these things happen. And I'm just, I'm wary of incentives for a variety of reasons. One, you have professional shakedown teams that companies hire to go find the best deal. And you've mentioned Alabama and a couple of other states that are competing for this frontier spinning. So I'm just, I don't think it's right. I don't think it's fair. You're talking about businesses that have been here going back to 1915. And I think it's, no one I've talked to in the past few days support this.
Any other comments?
Yeah, I have one. The way I look at an incentive package is what does it do for Lee County? The baseline, the absolute bottom, least common denominator. And, you know, this is a perfect example of we either, if we, if we have to do this to get this company to have this $20 million facility, and I think that's a, that's one of the things when you compare it to a small business, like some of the people who own this board who own small businesses, you know, you can't, you're not comparing apples to apples there because, you know, a small business doesn't come and invest $20 million into your community and afford you new jobs at one time.
If they do, they're not a small business.
That's right. But the way I look at it is it's going to reduce our property tax base at the end of the year. It's going to help our citizens at the end of the year because it's going to bring in that much more money that we wouldn't have had. If we don't do it, I can guarantee you that Alabama or Richmond County will get it. So on one hand, and I'm just, I'm just making this analogy like I would think through any other decision in my business. On one hand, you have a big fat goose egg. The other hand, you have positive cash flow for your company or your government. And I just don't see that, and I know the game is played and I'm with you, I don't really particularly like the incentive game because, you know, it's, government's role is really not in incentive process. But it is what it is and I'm a realist in that. And I think that the very bottom line is we got to do what's best for Lee County. And if it reduces our taxes at the end of the day, I mean, I'm not going to stand up here and grandstand and say, I hate incentives so much that I'm not going to vote for it because of that. And that's just the way I feel about it.
You can have 50% of something or 100% of nothing. And the bottom line is this, it depends on what your take is on what's important to Lee County citizens. Those who work on those jobs that might be transferred from here are probably somewhere with a finger crossed that we do something. Those who are well off could care less. And I'm sure that's the case for many people who happen to be well off and satisfied with their financial resources. But the crux of the matter is that when we do something like this, small businesses that aren't getting incentive because they don't qualify to even apply are still benefiting from the people who earn a living here in Lee County and spend their money in this town. So we all, over the long haul, get to shift some of that money around. It goes into one pocket, out of that pocket, into another pocket.
All the small businesses that are going to be providing the concrete, the electrical, the...
Your smaller business is just going to impact right on, right on to this larger business here that's putting this 20 million on the ground.
May I, Mr. Chairman, may I follow? Mr. Smith, you have a very good point and what I'd like to follow those, these ideas...
Remind me what his point is and I want to hear that.
Well, not his point, I should, I'll retract. I will say his concern about not the point.
Okay, that's different.
Thank you. But what I would like to, and maybe it should be in the presentation, and I don't do a good enough job in saying it the first time, but what I would like this board to consider is what's the overall, and it was said, Mr. Reeves just said it and James said it as well, is what is good for Lee County as a whole, I'm trying to look at the big picture, versus, and you very well talked to 20, 100 small business people who basically said they were against it, but I don't want to go against somebody's ideal that it's just bad because that's big and I'm small and I can't seem to do it and they may not understand that overall picture. All I'm trying to do is look for the overall picture of what's good for Lee County today with the several rules that are handed to me.
You know, I can go over to Durham and show you a guy who's against Santa Claus and Christmas. And so, you know, anybody can take a decision to be against them if they don't have to justify it.
Okay. Any other comments?
I do. My concerns is that we are going 70% of their tax burden. So I'm really nervous that we're setting a precedent here for that. Another one of my understandings is that their current facility will continue to stay here. So it's just their expansion that they're looking to put either here or somewhere else. So there really won't be any existing jobs transferred. Is that correct or if they decided to put this facility somewhere else? Is that your understanding?
It's, that is my understanding because those are extra jobs. Yes, ma'am.
And I guess, you know, Commissioner Kelly, the point you made that if it reduces our taxes, I have yet to see that that does that. And, you know, I've heard so many retirees in my district who are living on fixed incomes and they see their tax burden each year continue to go up and that affects their quality of life, you know? So I have yet to see how any of these incentives have decreased our tax, the tax burden.
If they pay more money next year than we have this year, how does it not reduce our taxes or give us more money that we don't have to increase taxes? If you get zero versus 600,000 next year, how does that, I don't understand?
Because our cost of government and the cost of our schools continues to go up.
It's an expense issue. I'm talking about revenue.
Then you have to have revenues to do that. I'm saying I have not seen our property owners see their taxes reduced as part of this.
Yeah, you and I are...
Well, in five years, if you approve this, you will see a reduction because we'll be getting 100%.
But by that time, their, the large part of this is their equipment and it'll be fully depreciated out and, you know, we're not going to get much property tax on that. I don't know what the replacement cycle is on that type of equipment, but we faced that with Wyatt, I think, a couple of years ago where all of a sudden, boom, you know?
But even what your point would only be valid if everything else just still, doesn't matter. Something else is going up. We're going to have to build more school or expand or do something with county government. You know, there's always a cost involved. But every corner we try and turn in a positive manner, we're faced with something that we already have tied to us that's still, is steady growing.
Yeah, that's, I guess, part of my point is that, you know, if we get 100% of the taxes that they're, you know, would pay, you know, that's going to help pay for some of these things that we're experiencing and maybe other property owners won't have to have their taxes go up to support that. So it's a loss of revenue. And I do disagree that, I do fault the state of North Carolina and our federal government because tax reform is badly needed and, you know, it puts us in a precarious position. And you take a look at some of the companies that are going to South Carolina, Virginia, and Tennessee, and it's because their states are taking this seriously and they're kind of getting out of the incentives game and they're doing real tax reforms. So if corporations and businesses didn't have such a big tax burden, you know, we wouldn't have to be giving, you know, grants back on their property tax bill. So that's all I have to make.
Okay, I'm going to go ahead and call for a vote. Although in favor of granting this request for the incentive that's stated in the paperwork, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no.
No.
The vote is five to two in favor. All right. The next public hearing is a request from, to consider a project with the Lee County Economic Development Corporation, Caterpillar Manufacturing. I will now open the public hearing concerning this request and again recognize Mr. Daniel.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Second request today is to hold this second public hearing to hear comments for providing, considering an incentive produced to Caterpillar located in Lee County Industrial Park, North of Sanford. Caterpillar is the world's largest manufacturer of construction and mining equipment. They have 300 operations in 40 counties. Caterpillar's been in business in Lee County since 1996, employs 600 people locally. They produce state-of-the-art skid steer loader for construction industry here in Sanford. This plant is the only Caterpillar plant that assembles the skid steer loader and from here the loaders are shipped all over the world. Caterpillar recently launched a corporate initiative globally to deploy seven simulated work environments that will be used to retain their entire workforce and create a cultural transformation within the company based on lean manufacturing concepts. Two simulated work environments will be located in the U.S., the other five elsewhere in the world. Caterpillar proposes to transform a 50,000 square foot building at the industrial park from a light and dust, light assembly plant to a world-class training facility for Caterpillar and the building, construction products division. Caterpillar is prepared to commit 1.6 million in facility improvements and equipment upgrades. Economic Development Corporation is recommending that the county invest $27,064 to ensure that workers' training and assessment center locates in Lee County rather than elsewhere in the South. The agreement before you spells out how the calculations were made and when the payments will be made to the company. This is a performance agreement as the one before and the company does not place investment in Lee County, does not receive the incentive. The payments on this are scheduled over a three-year period and paid after the taxes are paid. And the workers' training and assessment center will be a great asset to the Caterpillar facility here and to our county.
Okay. And I assume you speak in favor of this?
I do. Yes, sir.
All right. Is there anyone else who speaks, wishes to speak in favor of it, I believe?
I'll just reiterate that the Chamber of Commerce board enforces adoption of this incentive plan for Caterpillar also.
Anyone else who wishes to speak in favor? Anyone who wishes to speak against this proposed agreement? Having heard none, I will close the public hearing, entertain a motion concerning this request.
Mr. approves.
Motion's been made to approve. Now any discussion? I would say that there's quite a, quite a difference between this request and the one that we just approved. It's only runs for three years, $27,000.
I'd like to sort of commend the EDC. This is a, I think, a well-put-together package in that it really brings people in to showcase Lee County and what we have to offer. You know, if we can be the hub for Caterpillar and help them grow their, their business by, you know, providing, you know, a little help on their training facility, you know, all these people coming in will be just an incredible boon to our economy in regards to gas and food and everything, you know, lodging. I think it's just a very well packaged, Mr. Daniel.
Thank you.
And I, those were my impressions, because you kind of impressed me about this, but after you, you talk about simulated and virtual, is this something that people are really going to travel here to do or is this going to be some kind of web-delivered virtual training?
No, ma'am. It is our understanding that they will travel here to take place, training to take place here.
Do you have any idea on the numbers of people each year?
Not at this time, I do not. I don't want to tell you wrongs, but I want to guess. It's for the whole, this would be the hub of the United States, right? Yeah. Well, there's two and be one of those. One is the South and I'm not sure where they, they said they're, it's probably in the package and I'm ruffled to find it. But we're sure that they're here. It is not, I think that obviously is a common thing in the virtual office and some of those things, but no, this is, this is a hands-on.
It's been my understanding, and I've been in training and development for 25 years now, a lot of times what they'll do is send their high-level managers. They'll actually go through the training, then they're expected to go back and, you know, somehow or other deliver that training. So I just don't want this to be something where, you know, we have just maybe 10, 20 people a year coming in and doing this and to be disappointed in what it might do for our economy without there being a larger number. And I also have some concerns. I've, last couple of flights I've made back from the Midwest, seems like I've sat next to somebody who's coming down here to visit Caterpillar or to do something and I says, oh, where are you staying in Sanford? Oh, we don't stay in Sanford. We stay in Cary, you know? And so that's another concern is that there's no guarantees that they're going to stay here. You know, with Caterpillar out there, it's just as easy for them to go on that poor lane and for some reason their perception of Cary being able to stay in there is, so I don't want any hauled hopes here.
They have a facility in Lydell too.
Well, that'll change when we get that Super Hall mark.
It is a concern and I fight that all the time with economic development. That road is a two-edged sword. Here, just as easy, you know, we lose shoppers there too. We fight for that every day. So that's why we're trying to make it better.
I believe they, they do have a testing facility in Caterpillar. Any other comments? Have a motion on the floor, approve. Although in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no.
No.
This is approved, five to two. Thank you, Mr. Daniel.
Thank you.
I would like to, I will commend the board for their comments today and I'm, I'm pleased to be open. Everyone feel free to make, to get the full story as required. I would like to welcome... I would like to welcome Mr. John, county manager today, Crumpton. This is his first meeting, this, this, his first meeting with us. And John, you got any comments to make?
Yes, sir, I do, actually. First of all, it's a pleasure to be here today, and we've had a good day, trying to get up to date on current issues, and the debate y'all just had is, it's a debate that in the county I just came from, they debated monthly. It, when you lose twenty-two hundred jobs over the last eighteen months, even sometimes economic incentives isn't enough to keep companies. So it's not a, the economic development game is not an easy game right now, and if you're in the game to create jobs and keep jobs, it's, it's just not fun, no matter what side you're on right now. So I sympathize with, with the board and its deliberations, because it's the citizen who, who has to walk upstairs and pay their tax bill. Here's that a big company's getting a big incentive. They, they're having a hard time understanding that, so hopefully, there will be some tax reform in this state in the near future. One of the current issues that I think the board has tackled in the budget season, and Mr. Hall was bringing me up to date on today, is the redistricting of the election precincts, and the fact that the Board of Elections is having a meeting tomorrow night at five-thirty to discuss their rezoning, redistricting, reprecincting, whatever they're trying to do. Just wanted to let you know about that meeting, and that Mr. Hall and I both will be attending. As my understanding, the board indirectly kind of addressed this issue by not approving additional equipment for additional precincts in next year's budget. So any direction any of y'all would like to give us before we head off to this meeting tomorrow night? Whether you want to do it after the meeting or during the meeting is up to you, but it's obviously a new issue for me. I did call the Board of Elections today and speak to Nancy Kimball, tried to find out a little bit of information. So I will be headed over there tomorrow and see what they have to say. I'm glad to be here, looking forward to working with everybody.
Chair sit well.
This one feels a lot more comfortable than the one over there.
I think the other one over there's been worn out a little bit, so, but no, it's nice and cool over here.
Any comments from the commissioners, Mr. Reeves? No, Mr. Maugham. Just on what we've done here today, I'd like a comment I've heard a couple of times over. I think we're mighty fortunate to have the industry here in this county that we have, and the work that John Daniels and Bob Hughes have done, that entire board, working to acquire jobs, industry to come into this, this county, high-tech jobs. Just what Mr. Crumpton alluded to, so far as loss of jobs, it's good to know that we've got people that are willing to come here, build, and have jobs ready for somebody that wants to work. And the, and the talk you just made about someone going up to pay their taxes, or their son or daughter might be out of a job, but yet, we are fortunate to have new jobs coming into this county.
I would like to see us address the trash in our county in regards to, I'm speaking at a big level, trash dumps and used cars that have been sitting. I've had, I've had three people now calling, and reporting neighbors of, he's got ten cars in his yard, they've sat there for six months, and, you know, there's a, you know, a junkyard at the end of so-and-so road that needs to be cleaned up. And, you know, as little as it may seem in regards to the big picture, I think that we need to take a proactive approach to cleaning our county up, and maybe working with the city, using their, their enforcement people on a contract basis to go do this, so we don't have to hire anybody, but, you know, some of the bad problems out there in our county that need to be cleaned up, you know, I think we need to address it.
Okay, well, you can talk to the county manager, Mr. Hall, and see what we need to do. I don't know if we have anything on the books, so, enforce anything like that. Are you aware of any-
Abandon car ordinance.
The UDO doesn't that-
Code enforcement-type things.
We have a housing code, we never-
What about junk cars?
Planning has, I mean, the zoning ordinance-
Nothing overford.
Has nothing overford. I was over planning, I don't know, what did UDO say, did you, John?
I do think it does address it, Commissioner Kelly, but we'll just, we'll look at it. I'll be glad to look at it as well with you.
Okay. Mr. Reeves?
Mr. Crumpton, welcome. Glad to see you.
I have just a question for Lisa, but I think it can probably wait till the next meeting, because it had to do with the misunderstanding with the current operating expenses for the new high school, how it went from two hundred thousand to a million or whatever, or whatever that was.
That was accurate. That's actually the one to the new middle school.
Okay, and do they not include that in their C O P?
The C I P submission that was submitted last year, when we were doing the C I P before we issued the debt for that school, did not show the million two.
Operating expenses don't come under C I P, do they?
We asked for that information so that we can evaluate the operating cost in factoring in, looking at a project, and we have tried, we had planned on doing a four-year tax rate this year, and the time we were doing that C I P, so, and even when we did this year's C I P, we had to go back to the schools more than once. I think I had to go back to them at least twice to finally get operating numbers, and the numbers we even got this year for the projects they had in C I P this year were still not good. That's why we said, when we start the C I P process, this October or November, it will begin with a sit-down training session that all agencies and departments who participate in our C I P process will have to attend, so that we can explain to them. We try to give it to them in written documentation, but we can't guarantee they read it. So we're not asking they come in, we can, and explain to them what we are referring to. And it's been explained to me by Dr. McCormick that they had discussions with our former manager, and were told to only include operating, and that they came back and supplied this one point two million dollar number that was also supplied to you when you asked for some information. If it was supplied, I cannot locate any of the records in the manager's office, nor can I find that I ever received a copy of it. So the number that we had to work for when it was working on the budget for this year was two fifty, right before I finalized the numbers, or I had already finalized my numbers and was working on, and was in the process of writing the message, did I get the copy that you had requested that showed one point two.
I guess it was my understanding that when the certificate of participation was issued, one of the requirements that the previous board had was that the operating expenses for that new facility be disclosed in that C O P somehow in that paperwork, so, no?
We do not have to disclose the operating cost.
But I thought that that was part of what the, the school system was required to disclose when we issued those, as my understanding.
We cannot borrow money for operating.
Right.
We're going to borrow for building.
Yeah, I know it wasn't, but I thought that part of that was they had to estimate what their operating expenses would be, so that was misunderstanding.
We asked for it on the C I P process, and that's in that point two.
I'll tell you, as assounded as you are about-
We were glad you asked for it. I mean, because we wouldn't have, we wouldn't have got it.
You'd have gotten it the same way you got it on the high school.
That's it, yeah, after the fact.
Yeah, you'd have gotten it, that you would have had the same kind of react on it we have right now.
So, one last question. The C O P, have we, we've received that money for that that's going to be used to pay for the middle school construction?
Yes, ma'am.
And are we receiving interest on that?
Yes, ma'am. It's invested, so we, actually, the money is deposited into an escrow account when we do COPS versus bonds. When we do a bond issue, the money comes directly to the county. When we do a COPS deal, it goes into escrow, and we have to spend our money before we can draw it down. So as the projects are proceeding, we are drawing our money back down, but the money is earning interest at that level.
And that's going to be stayed in there for capitalization rather than maybe transferred over to general fund?
What it does is each project accrues its interest based on the proceeds dedicated to that project, and as the project proceeds, if there were to be an overrun on the projects, just like we just had today, or like we had at Southernly High School, it would come back to you to have the chance to appropriate investment earnings if you wanted to, to get a project out of the hole. If not, when the project is done, if there's contingency money left, or investments, or investment earnings left, it comes back to this board to decide, one, do you want to transfer to the general fund, use it for debt service, or transfer to reserve for future capital projects.
One of these days, maybe I'll understand all this stuff.
Well, in comp two, you're not getting the same return for all of the money, because they're very invested. How many do we have for the-
Well, now then, the money that we have now is invested, well, our money is invested at one time now. The bondholders are paying varying interest rates, but that doesn't come back to us at that point, at that manner.
Lisa, a smart move by taking a proactive approach on training these different departments, so that we don't have to go through this year after year after year, and be able to hold somebody accountable for somebody else's mess-ups.
We have found that we're trying to take a much more proactive approach on our tax rate and trying to do more forethinking, and it's causing us to have to go back and try to push them to give us what we need. If we can't get it, then it's impossible for us to second guess. They know what it takes to run a school or community college project better than we do, or they should.
I'm going to recommend that when you start to implement, before you implement that process, that that request for participation comes from the board.
Yes, ma'am.
And the communication director with board education and the superintendent's office, and college president, and anyone else who respects to be a part of the process.
I believe Mr. Crumpton said he's going to start on it about Christmas.
Just after Christmas.
The budget, yeah. C I P will start in October or November, I hope, so it can be a separate process.
Okay. Thank you, Lisa. Mr. Pascal?
I don't know.
Mr. Hall?
We're adjourned this meeting to reconvene tomorrow to make sure we don't violate the notice requirements of the board meeting.
Okay, we can do that. I'll recess.
But before you do, let me mention that there's an issue that the financials are taking up. Once I get a full more information, that's involved personnel now, I'll bring it up.
All right.
Mr. Chairman, I'm taking off for Iowa either tonight or early in the morning. Is that good? Is there a problem if I'm not here for the-
No, I think what Mr. Hall wants to make sure, that if there are at least four commissioners there, see, that constitutes a quorum, so we would just recess this meeting until tomorrow, and then we can adjourn after that meeting. I have a communication here. Thanks for being so thoughtful. Bob, Jamie, Jeremy, Robert, Ed, Linda, and Kirk, I would like to thank each of you for the flowers, cards, telephone calls, prayers, and visits during the recent loss of my mother. Your kindness and sympathy has meant so much during this stressful time. I work for the best board of commissioners in the state of North Carolina, and I thank each of you for your love and support. Thanks again. Thanks for thinking of me, Gaynor. All right, I will adjourn this meeting at this time, until, what's the time of meeting tomorrow?
About five-thirty.
Until five-thirty at the Board of Elections.